Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting. I called this meeting to order, but before roll call, I would like to take a moment to recognize that today is September the 11th, a significant day in American history. Please join me in a moment of silence to honor the first responders, those who lost their lives, and the survivors and families impacted by the tragic events on this day in 2001. Moment of silence, please. Uh, roll call. Everyone's present.
Tom's not up.
So we got somebody missing. This is eight out of nine.
Does that mean I can go?
No, 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 we are not going to excuse you tonight. Yes, Madam Clerk?
Can you vote by hand?
He can vote by hand. Is that all right with you, Commissioner?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you so much for your cooperation. 100%. Madam Clerk? We have invocation by Commissioner McGlaughlin, Melvin McGlaughlin. Please stand.
Shall we pray? Eternal God, we come first of all to thank you. We thank you for this day. We thank you for life, health, and strength. With us now that you come into this meeting, help us to make the decision that will be pleasing to thee. In thy holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. We have three wonderful persons to come up and assist us with the pledge allegiance to the flag. Please join us at the podium. Thank you. Now, I would like first for you to introduce yourself, and with the one speaking, be last.
Hi, I'm Gracie Moore.
Wait a minute, what school?
DH Conley.
And what classification?
I'm a sophomore.
Now, that's beautiful.
My name is Holly Thomas, and same for me.
Okay.
I'm Jacayla Shakaford, and I'm a junior.
Okay. Wait a minute, what school is that?
DH Conley.
Oh, Conley. Oh, wonderful. Now, we have the one who's going to do it.
Hi, my name is Aida Button. I'm in 12th grade at DH Conley, and I'm currently senior president of our class.
Well, I am happy to have the course. Please lead us in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one mission, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would either of you want a minute to say something? You're going to be a public speaker? Thank you.
Well, it's a pleasure to be here, and I'm so happy for this opportunity. It's very nice to see all the people in this room and be able to be involved with the community.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you for having us.
And thank y'all for coming. I like this. It was different. We will now have the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner McGlaughlin.
And you may all vote by hand if you wish, if that's the simplest way.
We're all waving to you.
Now, we're being confused.
Everybody will vote by hand since we're missing someone.
Okay. Everybody's voting by hand, so I don't need to click a little clearer.
Correct.
Public addresses to the board.
You have two people signed up. The first one is Candace Pierce.
Candace Pierce, please join us at the podium. Are you here?
I'm here, but I don't think I've been.
Okay, we won't then.
Welcome.
Well, I might have sworn to say something, but not yet.
Not yet, all right.
And Ms. Edna Atkins.
Ms. Edna Atkins, please join us at the podium. Speak into the microphone.
And the attorney will state the message.
And the attorney will address, give you instructions.
Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters of public concern. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak, a total of 30 minutes is set aside for public addresses to the board. Please state your name and address prior to speaking.
Now, that doesn't mean you have 30 minutes to talk. Please speak.
To Ms. Reed, Commissioner Bo, Ms. Edna, Ms. Edna, Ms. Edna here. And I'd just like to take a moment to honor the 9/11 citizen that died back in 2022. What a tragedy. But we still lift them up in honor and silent prayer. Praise God. And praise, praise the good Lord. I just want to say that, I just want to raise the statement about Texas. You know, they have closed down the library in Texas, and there are more than five, I think it's more than 10, that they have closed down in Texas. And we don't need our library closed down in other cities, in other states, because the library need to be open for the student. They need to invest themselves in learning. The opportunity to read is very important for the students to read. We need to keep the library open for the student. They need to go there and research and learn. A mine is a terrible thing without the library. So we need to keep our library open.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to say that, I'd just like to raise this, the judges. There's a few judges in history that played many roles and happened to shape the direction of the court. Then William J. Monet, during his 34 years of tenure. This was the largest role that were played to the public, and his name was William J. Monet, which he labored in the shadow of Chief Justice. And I'd just like to raise one more issue very quickly. President, Governor Roy Cooper and President of the Department, something too ample, too latter to serve on the Supreme Court to state my opinion and address issue, but through the country, through the 50 states of the United States. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, Madam Clerk?
I mean, Manager, sorry. No one else signed up to speak. We can move on to ceremony presentations. Join the public hearing.
Okay. All right, we're moving right along. Number seven.
Okay. And Madam Chairwoman, if you and I would go down front, and if while we're going, the board would consider approval of these two items.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Nunn. Hands up.
The first one is a resolution honoring Nicole Rose, Deputy Register of Deeds. If you would come forward. You can stand right on that black piece of tape. Madam Chairwoman and members in attendance and in the public, tonight I have the honor of reading a resolution approved by this board honoring Nicole M. Rose, Deputy Register of Deeds, upon receiving certification by the North Carolina Association of Register of Deeds. And this resolution reads, whereas Nicole M. Rose deserves to be congratulated by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners on her accomplishment of receiving her certification by the North Carolina Association of Register of Deeds. And whereas Nicole Rose has diligently pursued the advancement of her certification in all areas as Deputy Register of Deeds. And whereas Nicole Rose has given her own personal time to prepare for in-depth examinations necessary to achieve certification in this area. And whereas Nicole Rose, by her recent attainment of certification in all register of these areas, has joined an elite group of deputy registrars who have been certified at this advanced level. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners honors and recognizes the achievements of Nicole Rose for the attainment of the advanced level of certification in all areas as Deputy Register of Deeds, adopted this 11th day of September 2023, signed by Mary Perkins Williams, Chairwoman, and attested by Kimberly Hines, Clerk to the Board, and we present this resolution to you.
Thank you so much for your service. We're so happy and congratulations. Want to say something?
Just thank you. We got it? And if we could do one more picture with the rest of the office, come on up.
I didn't see you, though. Is, what's your caller here?
Lisa could not be with us this evening. Thank you so much.
Good to see you.
Appreciate it. Thank you both for coming. So good to see you both. Thanks. Got the next one? Okay, the next is a proclamation recognizing Better Skills, Better Jobs Fair Day. If those in attendance for this proclamation would come forward, I see Michelle Marston-Stevens, Ernest Lee from Pitt Community College, and Kelly Andrews. Okay, so this proclamation recognizes Better Skills, Better Jobs Fair Day on October 5th, 2023. And this proclamation reads, whereas Better Skills, Better Jobs Fair has been held annually since 2020. And whereas Better Skills, Better Jobs is the largest job fair in the region and hosts almost 130 employers and education resources, over 400 adult learners and job seekers in 2023, and includes over 300 juniors and seniors in Pitt County high schools to find great career opportunities right here in Pitt County. And whereas the significance of this day is the incredible impact that Better Skills, Better Jobs Day has on our families, businesses, and industries right here in Pitt County. And whereas Better Skills, Better Jobs Fair builds awareness and engagement between local businesses, adult learners, and high school juniors and seniors to provide talent and skills for meeting current and emerging career opportunities in Pitt County. And whereas Better Jobs, Better Skills, Better Skills, Better Jobs Fair is sponsored by the John M. Belk Endowment, Pitt Community College, Greenville Pitt County Chamber of Commerce, the Greenville ENC Alliance, Pitt County Economic Development, IBX Media, Coinonia Community Solutions are again sponsoring the Better Skills, Better Jobs Fair on Thursday, October 5th at the Greenville Convention Center. And community partners include East Carolina's University's Office of Continuing and Professional Education, Pitt County Schools, Greenville Utilities, Trades Formers, NC Coastal Society for Human Resource Management, NC Works, ECU Health, and the NC East Alliance. And now therefore be it resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 5th, 2023 as Better Skills, Better Jobs Fair Day in Pitt County, adopted this the 11th day of September 2023, signed by Mary Perkins Williams, Chairwoman, and attested by Kimberly Hines, Clerk to the Board. And the Chairwoman will present this to you.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank all of you for what you do, because it is important that we keep our students here, 300. That's exciting. Continue to go with it. Yes. Let's close up.
All of us, that one? There you go. Thank you. You can keep that. We will, we will present this on the actual day of, and there is an invitation for all board members who are able to attend to please join. Anything else you all want to say?
You all got to send us an email with the time and date, right?
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
Public hearings.
Madam Manager?
Public hearings are up next for the 2024 Schedule of Values Standards and Rules.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners, and Manager Gallagher. Tonight we'll be asking that the board open for public hearing. Just a recap of kind of the process that has to go through for the adoption of the Schedule of Values for our January 1st, 2024 reappraisal. North Carolina General Statute 105317C defines the three requirements to adopt the Schedule of Value. At your August 21st meeting, step one of the requirements was completed. The 2024 Schedule of Values was delivered to the board, the county commissioners. Since that time, they've been on display at the Assessor's Office, the Manager's Office, the county, the Pitt County's website, and several locations throughout the county as well. Tonight, we'll ask you to complete step two, which I'll be asking Madam Chair to hold the public hearing for the 2024 Schedule of Values. There will be no other action tonight. And at your September 25th meeting, we'll be asking, I'll be asking the board to adopt the Schedule, the 2024 Schedule of Values. And at that time, they'll also, after that, it'll be advertised for four consecutive weeks in the Daily Reflector. But for tonight, if there's no other questions, I'm requesting that Madam Chair open.
I declare that the public hearing is now open. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this issue, you may do so at this time. Just stand up and come to the podium if you have, if you like to speak on this issue. And if you do not, then I will declare that it's closed. Let's move on. We got who?
Suzanne Gray.
Suzanne, did you want to speak on this? There you go.
I'm Suzanne Gray. I live at 6378 County Home Road, and I've had the privilege to talk with Russell on occasion about this reappraisal. I have a small farm, and since 2020, there's been a lot of development along County Home Road and Aiden Golf Course Road with a lot of subdivisions.
Just a moment. I forgot to ask the attorney to tell you how long you have to speak.
Right, now that the public hearing is open, Pitt County welcomes any comments on the reappraisal and the Schedule of Values.
Speak up for me, I have a hearing problem.
You have three minutes to speak on the reappraisal or the Schedule of Values, and your time starts now.
Your time starts now. Speak for three minutes.
Okay. The only thing I wanted to clarify was the valuation of farmland be fair, however this goes. My Commissioner, Ms. White, is down in my area, so that is, my only concern is that farmland be given an appropriate appraisal.
That's it? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll take that on advisement.
I have no one else signed up to speak.
No one else has signed up to speak. We have the next item on our agenda.
Disclosure, public hearing.
Close the public hearing. The public hearing is now closed. Thank you.
The next item on your agenda is the Convention and Visitors Bureau report. It has my name, but it's actually Andrew Schmidt at the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Mr. Schmidt is here. Howdy do today.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight. And I think we're going to load up my presentation here in just a second.
While he's loading it, I'm pleased to see that Pitt County shirt.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. I have two of them, actually, in case, backup plan.
Right call, two with him. We have some wonderful help coming out.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right, so I'm Andrew Schmidt. I'm President and CEO of the Greenville Pitt County Convention and Visitors Bureau. It's a pleasure to be here. Early, well, it was late winter last year. I came and talked to you a little bit about our efforts for our African-American Cultural Trail and to establish stops in Pitt County. We do have six stops in Greenville right now, four in the downtown district, one at Albemarle Avenue, and one at CM Epps. But we wanted to expand those stops into Pitt County in 2023. And so the CVB, along with our advisory board, and we have one member, Candace Pierce, with us tonight, that's helping to represent AACT, started our work to expand into Pitt County. So just want to give you a couple ideas of where we're going to be in a timeline and when those stops are going to be available. So we have two stops that we're getting very close on in Pitt County. One is Green Reef Park, and that's in the Falkland-Bruce area. The other is in Simpson that talks about early black landowners, and I'll get into both of those in just a second. And just recently, we've talked with Mr. Ivory Muborn and some other folks in Aiden about adding the Aiden African-American Ancestral Cemetery, which, if you saw the news probably a couple weeks back, they dedicated that cemetery, and we think that's going to be a great stop that we can add also in Aiden. But let me detail the two stops that we're going to be adding. We are shooting for the spring of 2024 to have our interpretive signs up, all the data, and also the information added to our app. Our trail is currently housed on our website at visitgreenvillnc.com, and it's also on our app as well. One of the stops that we're going to be adding is Green Reef Park. And basically, what happened was in 1925, William Moore started Riverside, Riverside Amusement Park for the white population in 1925. However, during that time, automobiles were becoming more prevalent in Pitt County, and the white population had access to those automobiles, and they started leaving Pitt County for their leisure and vacations. So in 1927, one of Pitt County's entrepreneurs, Nelson Hopkins, opened up the park in 1927, actually leased it to use for African-Americans as an entertainment and recreation center on the Tar River, and that lasted for two years. Unfortunately, it only lasted two years because white homeowners that were near there put some pressure on William Moore, and they actually had him close it after two years. But it was very successful in the two years that were open. We did do some research. This is where Green Reef is today. You can see, if you look at one of those pictures through the foliage, you can see the original building that was the bath house, and then you can see the clearing that led to the Tar River, which was the beach, quote unquote. Obviously, those points aren't accessible for most of our population, so what we'll do is we'll find a spot close to here, and Richard Wilson's going to work with us again. He's a renowned African-American artist that lives here in Pitt County, and we will have an interpretive sign near this site. But we have, we're very fortunate, we have a lot of information that we can add that people can access through the website and through the app. There's been extensive research done on Green Reef, not only by our folks here in Pitt County, but also by a gentleman who works for Marquette University, Andrew Carl, and he actually wrote a whole article about Green Reef, and it's about 20 pages long. It's fascinating, so we're really excited to share that information with the general public. So Green Reef is close to being ready to go, and you can see where it is on the map here, right just east of Falkland. Our other site that is getting very close to coming to fruition is our early black landowner site, which is going to be the John Bryant Parker Farmstead in Simpson. Basically, in the, after the Civil War, there are very few black landowners who own farms, but John Bryant Parker was the exception. He had a farm that was 13 acres. He also was an entrepreneur. He was one of the first African-Americans in the area that actually got into the home rental business. He bought four homes and rented them out, which was back in the early 1900s, a very, very big accomplishment for an African-American at that time. And so this stop will be really great. It'll, it'll talk about the agricultural heritage of black farmers in Pitt County, but also about John Bryant Parker himself and what he farmed and so forth. This is his family. I love this picture. This picture has a lot of significance for us, too, at the Convention and Visitors Bureau. This is John Bryant Parker and his wife, and there are eight daughters. Yes, eight daughters. If you look all the way down the line, the second from the last, is the mother of an employee that works for us. Ethelene Hardy Stover is our Convention Services Manager. That's her mom. So it's really special for us to have this stop added, and she has been a wealth of information, obviously, doing interviews and so forth about what it was like to hear her mom talk about growing up on the farm. So we're really excited to add this stop as well. But we also will pay homage to also other black landowners as well down in that area, and you can see there's five total. We'll concentrate on the John Bryant Parker, because we have a lot of information on that, but we do have other farms in the area that were owned by African-Americans in the early 1900s. And by the way, that picture that you saw was taken in 1915. And of course, with all the digitalization and the color opportunities, you can enhance it and have it colorized, so it's a kind of a great picture that we'll share. And then I want to talk just very briefly about the Aiden African-American Ancestral Cemetery. That was, again, dedicated a couple weeks ago in Aiden. You're looking at a picture of Aiden Cassie Wilson, also one of the first African-Americans in the Aiden community to own their own automobile, and they're sitting in their automobile right there. They are buried, they are laid to rest in the cemetery that we're talking about. There's been a lot of extensive work done in that cemetery, and the stories are amazing, and we can't wait to share those stories about the individuals that were, that are laid to rest there. So that'll be a little bit later coming, we think, Green Reef, and we think the early black landowner site will be in the spring, and we will have some type of, I'm not sure if it'll be ribbon cutting, we'll have some type of ceremony for that, and obviously, all you guys will be invited. And then we're thinking Aiden will be in the summer or the fall. We have a little bit more research to do on that site. But we're really excited to get out into Pitt County. And again, the idea for this trail is to continue to expand into Pitt County, and eventually link up with other counties in eastern North Carolina, and all of a sudden you have a regional trail, which is really great, because you can market your trail in Pitt County, but when you have six or seven other counties marketing as well, you've got a lot of people talking about that same trail. So that's the end goal, but we've got a lot of work to do, but we're really excited. I would love to come back in the spring and say, these are here, we're done, and invite you to come out and have a ceremony at one of the sites. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have at this point.
If there are other sites that exist, would you like to know about them?
Absolutely, yes. We're always...
Because there was a Johnson Mill Run down Old River Road, and this is how the food would carry it on the river for people who lived on the Old River.
We're happy to take any, any information, any stories. You know, one of our members is working on a group called the Rough Riders, which were the first African-American fire department. And so that's a really cool story. So any stories like that, we want to add. We don't ever see this trail stopping, we just see it being added to. So any stories, any information that you have, please pass it along.
That's Rough and Ready Fire Department.
That's rough and, I was going to...
What did I say, ready and rough?
Yeah, I was going to correct him on that.
Both ours right, Rough and Ready.
John Brazil was a member of that.
See, that's why Candace came.
Same thought.
Thank you, Candace.
If we want everyone's stories, we want everyone's ideas, please call us. Call me personally, just everybody knows where I'm at. Call.
I will.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for leading, supporting that project.
Next up is Sam Kroom with your GFOA Certificate of Achievement. That's, he'll tell you what that stands for.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Manager Gallagher. Tonight I bring you a good news item in Pitt County receiving the Government Finance Officers Association Award for... Award for Excellent in Finance, in Financial Reporting for the Annual Comprehensive Finance Report, ending June 30th, 2022. And actually brought a copy of the report. This is what Financial Services puts together, and this is what we submit. We do this every year, and the award's good for one year. This is our 33rd consecutive year that Pitt County has received this award. The award recognizes Pitt County's efforts in publishing an easily readable, transparent, and well-organized financial report. In addition, the award is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting. It is my recommendation for the board to accept the award and recognize the contributions of Financial Services. Thank you.
Congratulations to our finance team and for a tremendous job and well done.
So, move.
Motion? I hear a motion.
And I second it.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Nunnely. Second by, and we'll raise our hand. All opposed? All opposed? 100%, Madam Clerk?
Thank y'all.
Thank you on your leadership.
Next up is a report by Florida Hardy, Assistant Manager and Human Resources Director on the Classification Study Process. While she's coming and loading her PowerPoint, during last budget, this board had discussion about the classification process. That's the process that the county uses to determine and study its salary scale. So today, Florida Hardy is going to make a presentation about the current process, and then we'll receive any direction that this board may choose to provide.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members and County Manager again.
We'll have to talk up a little bit.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
And Board Members. Yeah, this is going to be a brief presentation because I think the manager has some comments she would like to add at the end. So I'm going to go through this pretty quickly. Slow me down if you need to. How did we start this process? Back in 2000, we set up a review process to study county job classifications, to look at our employee evaluation process, and to set up a pay-for-performance system. Those systems are still in place today. The Job Classification Review Process was completed in 2002. So that was the first one we did after we set up that committee. The last full review prior to 2002 was completed by an outside agency in 1994. So we went from 1994 until the 2000s, and we hadn't had a job classification study process in place, or we hadn't had a job study done. Initially, the committee was formed across the departments. So we have representatives from each department to come in and participate, share information, help people understand what their departments do. A consultant was enlisted to work with the committee to create an ongoing process. So they came in, trained us on how to complete a classification study process. And we've been working with that process ever since. A salary survey tool was created, and a classification review questionnaire was developed. The survey tool is a tool we're using, and we have to tweak it each year for whatever positions we're studying. A questionnaire is a review of a position. So if a department head has something they want us to deeply review, they submit a questionnaire. What we're looking for is what has changed with that position so we can take a look at it. In 2005, we conducted our first job classification review from what we had learned from the consultant. Each fiscal year, department heads receive notification of the positions in their departments that will be studied with a brief description of the process. The survey tool is then sent to 12 counties that are comparable in population size and budget structure as Pitt County, and we also include the city of Greenville and ECU. We use six counties that are smaller than Pitt County and six counties that are larger in population size than Pitt County. The data is then compiled to create an average salary calculation for matching positions from the participating entities. What we're looking for, and our goal, as it was set back in 2000, was to be within 5% of the average base salaries of our competitors. So this is how we do it, our rotation cycle. We study one-third of the county job classifications each fiscal year. And you can see how many years we've been doing this. To date, we've done six full cycles of this review process. We're just finished year three last year, the administrative management. So we started with year one, which is where we are again. So we'll be looking at the clerical professional, paraprofessional positions this year. We have the survey tool ready. Year two of the process is technical law enforcement. And then year three is administrative management professional positions, which is what we did last year. So this is a start over of the three-year cycle once again. Within exception, DSS and Public Health, because they're in the Office of State and Human Resources, they set their pay grades. The county does not do that. So we have no control over the pay grades that are set for those positions in those two departments. Now, we do check on the salaries of the positions and see what other counties are doing to make sure we're competitive with those salaries. Last fiscal year, we completed six rotation cycles, as I mentioned. And we're going to be starting over the clerical paraprofessional positions pretty soon. County classification studies are relative to the base salary of the job, not the actual salaries. What we're looking for when we reach out is the base salary of positions, not the actual salaries. As you know, actual salaries would go up and down. So by the time you get the data, it's probably old. So we go with the base salaries. We've consistently used this system for the last 17 years. And the data gathered from comparative counties, once we get all the data in, we collected in human resources, we create a document for the county manager to review. So all the data is covered with the county manager, and then we move on to the next step in the process. Departments are informed of any recommended pay grade changes within their departments and given an opportunity to discuss the findings. So we send them out a memo that says, this is what we're recommending. If you want to talk with us about it, if you want to talk to us about the data, let us know. With an ongoing review, it can be, it can be costly to make wholesale adjustments. That means large adjustments at one time. So doing it systematically like this has probably saved us a little money because we're keeping up with these jobs on a three-year rotation cycle. Cost of living increases are added to our base salary, which is a tremendous help in keeping us in the market. So every time a cost of living raise is approved by you all, it is added to the base salary of our salaries. So that brings our base salary up. Market reviews and adjustments to base salary allows the county to be more competitive when we're recruiting. Internal equity, one of the things that we're doing is every year, each employee has to review their job description and let us know, let us know if there's a change. How do we do that? We do it as part of the evaluation process. So when they get their employee evaluation plan set up each year in July, they also have to review their job description, along with their supervisor. Department heads can submit a request for a review of a position whenever they think there has been a significant change in a position. And we will take that questionnaire that they're going to send to us or the new updated job description and go through it and review it. And then we will talk to the county manager on what we're recommending from HR. And that is a quick, fast review of the process. And I'm here for questions. I think the manager has something she wants to add.
I just wanted to be sure, based on discussions that this board had at the end of, during last budget and at the end of the fiscal year last year, I thought it was important at this stage in the game to make sure the full board was aware of the current process that we have in place. If the board is comfortable with the current process, as Florida's just outlined, then we will continue with that process. And they have already embarked upon the steps to begin year one of the next three-year cycle. If this board has an expectation other than that, I'd seek that direction now so that when we get to some point in the future, I've met your expectations.
We have a question by Commissioner.
Yeah, I appreciate your presentation. I think it was very timely. How often, Mr. Madam Manager and Florida, do we consider a cost of living increase, which I think that's very important in today's climate, that we should certainly consider that?
I would hope the answer is every year for the employees.
So we, do we do a cost of living every year?
Do you consider a cost of living every year? A cost of living isn't something that's expected. But most years, you have given a cost of living. There was a period of time, I'm going to say a four- to five-year period, four-year period during a recession, that this board did not award any merit raises or cost of living adjustment on the recommendation of the prior manager and the action of this board because there weren't sufficient funds in the budget to do it during that recessionary period. Every other year in history, you typically do a cost of living adjustment, and we have in your budget each year those percentages. They go from as low as a half a percent to a percent effective half year up to, I became manager in 2022, and in an effort to bring the salaries to a more competitive level, in 2022, you did 4% for the full year, which is the highest you had ever done in history as of that date. Last year, you did 6%, which is the highest you've ever done in history in order to boost those salaries because the market was showing the most growth in our competitors' salaries. So I anticipate that cost of living will be recommended each year going forward absent some very significant recessionary or financial factors. And then in addition to that cost of living, we have built in the pay-for-performance, which you know is 1.2% or 2.4% depending on your increment within the classification system. And that's on top of that. All of that builds into the base pay and compounds year over year. So some of our other jurisdictions have retained outside consultants to do the work that we have traditionally done in-house all those years. There are pros and cons to that. Your cost would be in the range of about $100,000 for an outside consultant to review our salaries across the board. And of course, we wouldn't be able to have any control over public health and social services, as Ms. Hardy has said. And so I just want to be sure that as we move through this budget year, this board is satisfied with the current process that we have. Or if you are anticipating something different, let me know so that I have enough lead time to do something different before we present your next fiscal year's budget.
I thought it would be a good time, since there's so many new ones of us on here, that we could get this report from our Personnel Director. Any questions other than Commissioner McLaurin?
Just a comment in the sense that when I used to go to more state meetings and things like that. We have been outstanding, I think, in this particular area of dealing during the recession, before the recession. It's always been above board. You've never failed to answer a question that was asked of you. The plan was always there. We were always aware of it. And I'm not sure that that goes on in all the counties. It may, and good for them. But I think that you all do an outstanding job. And I think the whole area of county government does a good job with our money and with our salaries and trying to keep up and maintain a good group of people working for Pitt County.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Commissioner Ward. Any questions on this? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You are excused, Madam Personnel Director.
Okay. We will continue on.
Candace?
Ready for your manager's report?
Yes.
I have a few items for you. Your next meeting date, September 25th. Remember, you have a special meeting at 4:00 p.m. to discuss American Rescue Plan funding in a workshop here in this room from 4:00 to 5:30. Then you'll break for dinner and then have your regular meeting at 6:00 p.m. on September 25th. And then your meeting following that, you only have one meeting in the month of October, and that'll be October 16th at 6:00 p.m. in this room.
I would like to remind the general public that the September 25th workshop retreat, we will not entertain questions and discussion from the general public, but you are welcome to listen. This is a workshop retreat for the board and its members so that we can get a clear understanding of some issues we have to address as it relates to our. Any questions? Thank you. Madam Manager?
The next item, I'd love to call forward Ken Bran and Misty Chase. We have two new department heads that I'd like the board to lay eyes on. If Ken Bran would come forward. Ken Bran is our new Director of Buildings and Grounds. And Misty Chase is our new Director of Pitt Area Transit. And I'd like to welcome both of them to the Pitt County team.
Would you like to say something?
Would I like to say something?
Yeah, you got a second.
I'm excited to be here, and I'm glad to be an employee of Pitt County.
Thank you.
Misty comes to us from Greene County with a wealth of experience in transportation, direction, and services. So she didn't travel far, bumped one county over, and we are thrilled to have her knowledge and experience.
At least she didn't have to move the house. And Mr.?
Bran. I came over from engineering. I've been at the county about seven and a half years, so I just moved apartments.
Thank you so much. And welcome aboard.
Thank you.
We're happy to have you. Next.
I wanted to give an update regarding NC DOT debris removal. We had a deadline that has passed, and we have applied. North Carolina Department of Transportation reached out to counties and asked if we would submit our name, and we did, in order to be considered for a memorandum of understanding. So John Demery from Solid Waste submitted that information, and we will now be considered for a memorandum of understanding with the North Carolina Department of Transportation so that they can allow us to pick up debris after a storm. This is a preparedness effort in the event that on a state-maintained road, they can't get out here and we have an emergent need. And in order for the county to step in in those types of emergencies in advance, you have to have a memorandum of understanding or a memorandum of agreement with DOT. So that has been submitted.
Yes, ma'am.
And we wanted to let you know that we did that. There's no cost associated with that application. So we went ahead and did it to meet the deadline, wanted to make you aware. And then if awarded the MOA, we'll bring that back to the board for approval.
Um, that's what we'll be doing next.
Do you want to do it now?
Next, no, ma'am. Next month. I did get notification that they've accepted the application. What the, what it allows us to do in the event of a storm, if DOT is falling behind, we can ask to go and help pick up roads and clear roads, and it just gives us the authority to pick up debris like DOT will be doing.
Is that just for Pitt County?
Yes, ma'am. We just want to do just for Pitt County.
Okay. Commissioner Nunnely?
So the situations where we are stepping in to provide, I guess, bolstered responsive support, are we, as a county, do reimbursement for outlays that we make in those efforts?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Just, I would like to remind you, too, we charge for CND waste. We cannot, we cannot waive that fee. The county cannot waive, if they, you can waive it, but we would, would not get reimbursed. But yard waste, we don't charge for, so. And in the past, we've been reimbursed for our time grinding the yard waste.
We do have a hurricane out in the Atlantic. Any other questions? Any other comment by the board? Thank you so much. We appreciate you being here, Mr. Dunne.
And don't go far, John, in case there are other questions. The next item is an update regarding recycling operations. And this, I really just wanted to update the board that since our last meeting, ECVC, East Carolina Vocational Services, has transferred all of their property for recycling to RDS, the successful bidder to our RFP. The county is now under contract with RDS per their bid pursuant to the terms and the response to that RFP. Recycling continues for the citizens without any disruption and to the municipalities. And then I just wanted to say an extra thank you to John Demery, to Tim Corley, to ECVC, to RDS for all of the work that went into this. Truly a win-win solution for recycling in Pitt County, and it was a significant endeavor. And so I wanted the board to know that that process has been completed and recycling rolls on.
Thank you. Any question, comment on this issue? Thank you. Next.
And the last thing is an opportunity for commissioners to provide any reports they may have from the annual North Carolina Association of County Commissioners conference.
Any reports by anyone in? Commissioner McLaurin and Commissioner Huggins?
Well, I attended several sessions. One in particular, how your county can tap into North Carolina's hidden workforce. And believe it or not, that workforce is our veterans. That is a group that is experienced. They're capable, they're disciplined, they are well-qualified. And so workforce that we can tap into. I asked about, what about teachers? well-qualified. And so, workforce that we can tap into. I asked about, what about teachers? Because, you know, we're always talking about the shortage of teachers. And there's a program with them called Troops to Teachers. So, that's a group that our superintendent, our Board of Education, our Human Resources can reach out to, to tap into that workforce.
Thank you. Commissioner McGlaughlin?
I think the entire section conference was very good. One of the particular things that I was interested in was the community development programs that they've had. And it's amazing how counties throughout this state is investing in community development. And so, I think it's critical that we continue to look in that area for the betterment of Pitt County as well.
As always, I like going to any of the WIOA sessions. And this time, I attended one. And I like to say that other counties are having some of the same concerns that we, that I tend to have about the WIOA. And I like to let you know that I asked the State Office to make sure we get the slides that she sent or that she shared at that meeting so that you all can have the same information that we received on the WIOA sessions. It was a packed session, by the way. Thank you so much. And we'll move on to the next item. I think it's item for consent. Nope, I have one other thing up here.
Your item's for consent. That's right.
Oh, I took a minute. Okay. Items for consent.
Motion to approve the items for consent.
Motion by Commissioner Nunley, second by Commissioner Ward. Hands if you're in favor. All right. Any hands for again? Unanimously passed. Thank you so very much. We'll move on to the next item.
Your first item for decision, has Randy Gentry listed. He could not be here this evening. Jim MacArthur will come forward, or Jimmy Hodges is coming forward, and Jim MacArthur is in the background to assist as needed. This has to do with a GeoPrime simulcast upgrade for your 700 megahertz radio system and an opportunity to take advantage of a significant discount. So, Jimmy will make a brief presentation in that regard.
Thank you, Madam Chair Commissioners. Like Janice said, this is for the authorization for a budget amendment request for the virtualization GeoPrime project for the Pitt County radio system. The current radio system was implemented in 2012. And in 2017, we upgraded to a seven-site system. The prime site that we currently have on the system must be upgraded due to be an end-of-life by 2026. And Motorola is offering a trade-in credit for some of our hardware. This discount is valid through December of '23. So, the current project that we're talking about tonight is projected to cost $856,000. After December '23, it's going to be approximately $1.2 million. So, a savings of $377,727. And the next slide is a motion to request...
Well, I'll give you the issue. You want us to handle this right now?
Yes, please. The sooner we can handle this, the sooner we can get a purchase order sent to Motorola.
Let's back up to the, so we can see the savings. Any questions, board members?
I have a motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner White and second by Commissioner Smith that we continue to make this, take advantage of this savings. I think that was unanimous, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Thank you so very much, gentlemen, for being patient. Let's see, where are we? Next, Mr. Demery. Your name is by the next one. Award contract to construct a new wastewater.
Pump station.
Yes.
Our existing pump station out there was built in 1996 and is in dire need to be replaced. Back about a year ago, I was at this board meeting, asking that we hire the East Group to study and come up with some construction documents, including bid documents and technical specifications, to build a new pump station. We received three proposals from CW Hughes, Hendrick Barnhill, and Tripp Brothers. Tripp Brothers provided the lowest price of $493,331. This was above what we anticipated the project to be. We were hoping it to be in the $200,000 range. So, we did ask the East Group to go back to Tripp Brothers to see if there was any cost savings or anything that we could remove. The only potential cost reductions would be to remove items that wouldn't be feasible. So, the cost to construct a new wastewater treatment plant or wastewater pump station will be $542,644, which concludes a 10% contingency. To pay for this project, we're asking that funds come from our fund balance, the enterprise fund balance. And so, I'm asking to award the contract to Tripp Brothers in the amount of $542,644 and to do a budget amendment to transfer funds from the enterprise fund to my regular budget to pay the cost.
These are solid ways to enterprise funds, fund balance, not the county's general fund balance that are restricted for use for this purpose.
We need a motion, and we'd like to thank you for your vision.
Okay. I want to make one more comment. My permit requires me to treat the leach aid that goes through. And plus, it's where our bathrooms go. And what it does is it pumps to GUC's facility. And right now, we've got a temporary fix on it, and it's working fine.
Let's get it fixed.
You know, it could go out anytime.
Motion. I need a motion.
I'd like to first make our budget amendment motion.
Motion by Commissioner Nunley, second by Commissioner White. Let's vote.
I have a question.
Question by, we have a motion on the floor, and we can discuss the motion.
So, why is the 10% contingency part of the award? The way you worded that, you said you're going to award it to them, that amount of money, $500,000? What if you don't need that 10%?
If we don't need that, we're only going to spend the...
Are you in control of the money, or you give it all to them?
We're asking for the 10%. No, sir. We're asking for the 10% contingency so we don't have to stop the project, come back to you to ask. No, sir. If it comes in at 493, they're going to get 493.
All right.
Okay. Do we need further clarification? So, let's continue voting on the motion. All in favor? Hand. Thank you. No opposes, because everybody voted unanimous.
Motion to approve. Motion to authorize the contract.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Nunley to authorize the contract, second by Commissioner Ward. And we vote. In the discussion on the motion, we just passed it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your third item, if Tim Corley would come forward.
Tim Corley and Sheriff Dance is on this.
Yes. We've got a team from the Sheriff's Office and Craig Pierce with maintenance there, present to answer any questions about this item.
Thank you. Thank you for coming forward. My eye doesn't see that far.
Good evening, management members of the board. Just to touch quickly on Commissioner Colson's comment about contingency, because we typically do that on all our projects where we anticipate any possible surprises on the project that aren't really clear-cut. That allows us to provide that additional funds if necessary and not have to come back to you guys for any approvals prior to approval of those changes. So, certainly won't spend those funds if we don't have to. But, it gives us some backing if we do run into some issues along the way of the project that we need additional funds. So, this item is for the Pitt County Detention Center. If you recall, back when we did our CIP planning process, for this year, there was actually boilers that were approved on the CIP, and chillers was in subsequent years. So, what Craig Pierce, who's the maintenance supervisor for the detention center, has said is that after analysis of the chillers and the boilers at the site, that the chillers are the more immediate need at this time. However, they do cost more dollars. So, tonight, we've got a contract in front of you with Kearney Associates. It was bid out, and they were the low bidder at $597,000. That would be the dollars needed to replace the chillers. That would be monies that were included for the boilers initially, as well as additional funds coming from the sheriff's maintenance budget at the detention center. So, those would be the two combination of funds that would be utilized to pay for this project. So, tonight, we're asking for approval for the contract and for the manager to be able to sign the contract with Kearney Associates for the replacement of the chillers.
For the replacement of the chillers.
That's correct. And I've got staff here if there's any specific...
Correction. It's not a replacement of a chiller. It's adding a third chiller to take some of the pressure off the two existing chillers that we have.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your clarification. Motion by Commissioner McGlaughlin.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor? Let's vote. Unanimous? No need for disagreement, because we all voted for it.
Thank you. And thank you to the sheriffs and detention office staff who came tonight in support of this item. Appreciate you being here.
Proactive. That's it. Now, we're here for the good spots. Appointment to the boards.
The first one is on page 184 of your materials, and it's appointment to Board of Equalization and Review. Russell Hill is recommending that Ann Heath be appointed to the Board of Equalization Review with a term that expires September 11th, 2026.
Directions from the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion by... Second. Motion, I heard it over here, but I wasn't...
Sir.
Motion by Commissioner Nunley, second by Commissioner Huggins. Board Huggins, let's vote. It's unanimously approved.
The next one is a recommendation to appoint Ms. Tanisha Armstrong and Mr. Brandon Garris to the Pitt County Farm and Food Council as at-large representatives with terms expiring June 26th, 2026.
Motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Huggins, second by Commissioner Holloman. Let's vote. Madam Clerk, it was unanimous. So, no need for another one. Let's go to the next one.
In your last appointment for this evening, it's being recommended that Ms. Kelly Andrews be appointed to the Pitt Community College Board of Trustees with a term expiring July 1, 2027.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner McGlaughlin and second by Commissioner Holloman. Let's vote. Madam Clerk, it was unanimous. No need for opposing view. We are now at the point where we have commissioners' comments. Will there be any comments from, we're going to start with Commissioner Tom Colson.
No comment.
Commissioner Huggins?
Well, I do want to report that I represented this board last Thursday when the governor was in town on the panel, talking about school vouchers and funding for public schools.
Commissioner White?
Just want to, you know, recognize, like you did earlier, that today is the anniversary of 9/11, and may we all never forget that day.
Commissioner McGlaughlin?
Yeah, I do want to recognize the fact that, bring out the fact that the Board of Elections was so honorable to name the boardroom in honor of Bernard Hesserich. He was a very strong advocate of Pitt County Board of Elections. And I thought it was an honor to have that recognized and for his family and all the citizens here in Pitt County to know.
That's very good. I didn't, I wasn't aware of that. Thank you so much. Commissioner Smith?
No comments.
Oh, my. Commissioner Nunley?
No comments.
Okay. You didn't have any comments, Mr. Nunley?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Holloman? Commissioner Ward?
No comments.
Thank you. I've had fun tonight. Now, we will have closed session. When we get into closed session, Mr. Turner?
Yes, I would suggest that we move the board into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-3181184, to discuss matters related to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body, and GS 143-3181186, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee.
Madam Chair, move that we go to closed session.
Second.
Motion in closed session by Commissioner Nunley, second by Commissioner White. We'll take a break.
We need to vote.
We're voting.
To go into closed session.
We're going in closed session. Anybody opposed? All right. It's unanimous, Madam Clerk, that we go into closed session.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the closed session minutes from June 5th of this year.
I need a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Commissioner Nunley, you're up. Oh, we voted. I forgot. We're going in the closed session. Thank you. That's unanimous, Madam Clerk, that we go into open session.
We approved the closed session minutes. I'm ready to go now.
And motion to adjourn.
Second.
Wait, 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 wait. Is everybody in? All right. Now, we have a big motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by White and second by Nunley.